February 8th, we'll call the meeting to order of the school district at Tomahawk Board of Education. Please stand for the.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, clean.
Hafman. Hughesby. Johnson.
Here.
Kirsch.
Here.
Kissinger-Wolff. Long.
Here.
Rudai.
Here.
Baloo.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here. And we do have enough for our quorum. Adoption of the agenda, so I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Rudai, so moved.
Baloo, second.
Okay, have a motion of second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment, do we have anybody on the list, clean? Okay, anybody for public comment? Remember you're limited to three minutes, fifteen minutes total for the group. Any public comment tonight? None? Taking it easy on me here. Okay. Next is consent agenda, item number seven. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting in January 11th, approval of the minutes from the closed sessions on January 11th, 17th, 18th, 25th, and 27th, approval of the minutes from the special meetings of January 17th, 18th, 25th, and 27th, approval of the invoices from January 12th, 2022, to February 8th, 2022, and then employment and contract adjustments, which is replacement staffs, retirement and resignations. So I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved Kirsch.
Second?
Second, Baloo.
Okay, a motion of second to approve the consent agenda as presented, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is career and technical education update. And Ryan, you're gonna give us that?
Actually, no, the entire career and technical line department's gonna provide that too, but just wanted to preview and just say that February is Career Technical Education Month, and it was a great time just to pause and learn from our staff members about a snapshot of basically a lot of, some of the many great things going on in the CTE programs that we have. So the entire department is here to share some of those things with you, and I think they have some information as well, so.
Good.
So, CTE is career and technology education, but that incorporates an awful lot of things, like tech ed is one of those, family and consumer ed is one of those, business is another. So it encompasses quite a few different things. And what we put together tonight is a little slideshow talking about some of the things that we do, and some of the main things that our, our area really presents well to the students or is easily transmitted to them is career and college ready. We have, a lot of our opportunities allow us to get kids ready and get a step in the door for college, but it also allows them to go right into the world of work too. And we'll show you some of the things that we do that provide some of those opportunities to students here. So these are the departments that are all involved in CTE, so I kind of went over that, but you see on the right-hand side, college and career readiness. Those are things that are very easily transmitted to kids from us because of what our curriculum is. We also help an awful lot with academic and career planning, so giving kids experience in different areas to make them good, make good judgments based on where they want to go after high school. So some of the college-ready stuff that we do, these are all courses that have credit opportunities through either universities or tech schools. So Principles of Engineering, that is a THS science credit, as well as if students do well on the exam at the end, they can get college through MSO-8 Milwaukee School of Engineering. Digital Electronics also offers those college credits. Technical Woodworking is another course that we offer here in high school that students can get tech school credits through NTC with. So all of these that are listed, and we're gonna go through them each, but all of these are listed, they can get a bridge to that next step in training or education.
Yeah, so along with what Mr. Pieskew said, Education Engineering Design and Civil Engineering and Architecture, both if they pass the end exam, have the ability to gain credits at the Milwaukee School of Engineering at MSO-8.
And then with the Working with Children class, they get three college credits through NICOLE, and Medical Terminology, you can also get three college credits, and Culinary Creations. And in our Culinary Art class, they can get two college credits through NICOLE. And another thing to remember too, which is nice for those opportunities for the student is not just the college credits that they're getting, but if they go into a career and able to use those credits and they transfer to different schools throughout the state, so a lot of these credits aren't just for NICOLE. They'll transfer to other colleges, some of the UW colleges, mostly all of the tech colleges throughout Wisconsin as well. So they're saving that time and money, getting that opportunity in school.
Are those, are those three credits a semester worth of work, or a full year, or what is it?
So for my Working with Children, all of my Medical Terminology, Working with Children, Culinary Creations, and Culinary Art are all one semester class.
And then they get three credits?
Yep, they get three credits, except Culinary Art, they only get two credits.
Okay.
Just to piggyback off of that, some of them are different, it depends on what they are. I do autos and welding, so intro to welding, welding for automotive, auto service fundamentals, wheels and tires. Some of them are competency-based now, especially the welding program. So intro to welding and welding for automotive could be two or one credit depending on what they're doing and what they're taking for that. Auto Service Fundamentals is their introductory class, which ties into my Automotive Technology class, and students can take that, as well as new this year that we're doing is Wheels and Tires as well.
And similar to the differences based on class with Intro to Business, that's a one credit embedded in our eighteen-weeker semester class, which is a similar title. It's an introductory credit that NICOLE uses for their, I believe it's their Business and Management Program, which is a two-year deal. Leadership Development Class is also part of that program, that's a three-credit offering that mirrors content that we do for a semester in the department as well. And Accounting is a one-credit, a credit or class through NICOLE as well, which is also part of their Business Management Program. It's accounting-based on those going into business, not necessarily to be an accountant, which actually is kind of a shift from what I've taught, but it's allowed us to actually have accounting back in the school for the first time in a number of years, which has been a nice change for the department.
And then the last two there, Hatchet Innovations and Restaurant Design, will both have credit opportunities next year through North Central Tech. NICOLE doesn't offer those types of classes, so we're working with them to gain those credits. I'd also like to point your eyes up to the upper right there with the dual enrollment stat there. We had 178 students successfully complete at least one dual enrollment course last year. So you can see the state average is 17.8%. We actually had almost 50% of our students taking a dual red, dual credit class.
And the biggest thing about all of this, we're telling you because of the courses we have, we've, we've developed this mainly in the last five or six years, because we felt like students after high school, if they did have an interest, they were a little bit worried about how, how do I get to college? What are the steps? But here, they already have a foot in the door at a school, they're already enrolled, so it's easier for them to not only sign up for classes or school to go there, but also to get scholarships, you know? So it just, it's a, it's a step in the door, a foot in the door, and allows them to make that transition a little bit simpler. Make it think that, you know, it's not just other people doing this, I can do this. So that's why we've really promoted this and changed this over the last several years. That's a lot of hard work by all of them, so, and it's a good example of students being able to get that step in the right direction. Along with college ready, career ready is one of our big pushes, so we offer quite a few industry certifications. Through the wood strain of tech ed, we offer the OSHA-10 safety card. This is where students will go through a training, they get a card that says they are certified in the 10-hour OSHA. And they also do that with a 10-hour manufacturing card, which, as you know, in town, we have an awful lot of manufacturing. And when our students show that card, you know, the potential employer looks at that like, alright, you've been trained in this, this is something I can depend on you for. So these certifications are all in that same boat, so Ally's gonna talk about the next one.
And the nice thing, I just wanna go off with Andy as well as, I may be talking about youth apprenticeship here in a little bit, but we have students that are in the constructions, youth apprenticeship trade, and architecture, youth apprenticeship trade, and one of the requirements that they have to have to get that YA certificate is have the OSHA-10 training and CPR training, and so it's nice that we're able to give that students that opportunity here at school. Mr. Pieskew works with the students that have that, that haven't previously had them for the class that receives that training, so it's nice that we're able to work with him for that too. More of the FCS classes are Working with Children class, they get the Assistant Childcare Teaching Certificate and the Infant Toddler Certificate. Those certificates are met by all the competencies that they have throughout the whole course in the Working with Children class, and those certificates actually come through DPI. So it's nice that they're able to have that certificate at the end of the semester, and also in that class, they get Shaken Baby Syndrome training. I am a Shaken Baby Syndrome trainer, so I am able to give them that training in-house. We don't have to have anybody else come into school to do that, and same with sudden infant death training certificate, and as long as they complete everything above, they are able to do the mandated reporter training so that they can become mandated reporters if they go into that, into that field. And in our Culinary Art class, they have the Serve Safe Manager Test Exam, which is a state exam, and that allows them to be a manager in a restaurant. So in a restaurant, somebody in the facility has to hold a license to allow them to be working throughout the, throughout the whole night. And so it's nice that when we have students getting hired, that they're able to have that certificate. It gives them, you know, one step above, it gets them ready to be into the career, and a lot of our students at some point, and a lot of us have worked in hospitality at some point in life, that's usually, you know, a stepping stone of when they're in college or a job that they're gonna have while they're in college, so that's a nice certificate that they can get through the Culinary Art class, which is that Serve Safe Manager.
And Miller Welding is one that, if you look in welding, you hear Lincoln Welders, you hear Miller Welders, and Hobart. And Miller Welding has a training site for welding, they can get, I believe, five certificates, Dig Welding, Introduction to Welding, Meg Welding, and I think, believe there's a Flex Core Welding in there. Hobart looks at the filler metals and the materials that go into the welding. We do a lot with NICOLE when it comes to welding, and this is one of the things that I started implementing as soon as, you know, COVID hit, so we had some online training, and now I'm, everyone in my classes, we're gonna use it and continue to implement that. Those students leave when they're done, they got certificates that shows them what they, shows them that they accomplished something, but also shows them what they accomplish when it comes to welding. And then SB2 is actually through NICOLE, we use their account, they use this as a safety protocol for students that work in their auto shop, auto shop and auto lab. So students, when they're done in this, there's like thirteen different certificates that are in. One might be WD-40 if they're spending some money to advertise for them, but it's still a certificate that they can get through SB2. And it's also tied to ASE, which is Automotive Society of Engineers, which is a prestigious recognition. If you are a master technician, you know what you're doing, what you're doing, so they're working together, tied together, and that's, we're doing this through NICOLE as well.
One that's not up there is tied to the class that you approved for the Business Department a couple of months ago for THS Incorporated, which is gonna be Microsoft Office Services as well. Kids will do at least one, if not two, depending upon time, and investigating time for what they'll have time to do. So that'll also be there as well because, from everything I know, Microsoft's not going anywhere anytime soon, it's, it's what's used outside of schools in many cases, so them being able to go in with competency in those, in using that when they don't maybe get a lot of experience now will be helpful for them as well.
So youth apprenticeship, our youth apprenticeship program is progressing year after year. We work with many employers throughout the community, and I think it's awesome to just share that this year alone, we have almost forty youth apprenticeship students that are in the youth apprenticeship program this year, which means we're working with over thirty community, I mean thirty businesses throughout the community as well. We do also have a couple of youth apprenticeship employers in Merrill, and in Managua, and Rylander, and Wassa, so it's not just here, so it's great that we're able to reach out. And if you go to the Tomahawk website, you will see we have a youth apprenticeship page on there. And when you have time at some point, I don't wanna go through it all right now, but just some of the main things to focus on is looking at all the benefits that the students get out of it. Getting them to be able to get into a job, see what it's like, is that a career that they're interested in? If not, this is the great time to figure that out, and if they wanna switch, they can. The youth apprenticeship program is for juniors and seniors, so we have students that do the hospitality program as a junior, and all of a sudden, senior, they decide they wanna switch, and they're getting into IT. So awesome that they're able to switch and figure out, you know, what do they like, what do they not like, and it's great that a student can be leaving with two different YA certificates as well. You'll also see a list of all the different YA employers that we work with within the community, and up towards the middle of the page on the right side, there's a couple spotlight stories. So we have tons of spotlight stories, I wish we could put all of them on there, but that would be a lot to read. So I just have like five main ones on there, different businesses in town. One of the businesses that we've worked at for many years with the Tomahawk Community Bank, and one of the past students, this is one of their success stories, and there's a couple other ones on there as well. So when you have the time, I definitely recommend to see it and be able to see what the students are getting out of youth apprenticeship. But at the end, it's just great that they're able to get that academic and career planning during school, and some of the students are leaving early to go to work and get into the businesses earlier in the day, and just really get them prepared. And then we have awesome businesses as well that work with them, that they're not always leaving school early, you know? Some students don't leave school early, they're here all day, they have classes all hours, and they're staying for resource hour and working with other teachers, and they're only working, you know, half of the year depending on sports or co-curriculum clubs. So it's great that our communities in town work with them, and it's, and I go and meet with all of our businesses, so it's great to get into the community more and talk with them, and our students are able to get involved in the community. And again, also if you look at the state report card, you would see that we're above average on that too, and those numbers are just rising, so I'm excited to see them keep moving up.
As a parent in this district, I, my daughter just went to college just last year. She found out what she liked by working at Tomahawk Community Bank this year, and now she's going into finance in college. So it matters, it makes a huge difference in these kids' lives, so the, this has grown a lot, a lot because of her hard work, but it's paying off.
And I guess I should just elaborate one more thing on that, like a student that goes into a program, like a construction student, let's say they got their YA certificate through construction, and then they decide to go into the trades, the YA Youth Apprenticeship does communicate and bridge over to the RA, the Registered Apprenticeship. So again, we're saving students money, time, and they're gonna, because of saving the money and time, they're also gonna be getting instead job of paying more money sooner, so it's great that we're able to connect those connections with the students and the different employers.
Some of the other things that we do to get students career-ready is exposing them to as many different trades, the tech ed does a lot with the trades. And we do, we've partnered with CASE for the last five, six years where we go out there and we take a group of kids out there, and they actually get to run bulldozers and backhoes, and the kids just love it, of course, why wouldn't you, right? But since we started that partnership with CASE, we've had over six kids go into heavy equipment operating. So a lot of what we're trying to do is just open their eyes to what's out there, and give them a few experiences in high school so they can make wise decisions afterwards. And then also teach them about, what are the steps? Okay, I wanna be a heavy, I wanna run a bulldozer. Alright, well, Coloma has a training facility, this is how long it takes, this is how you sign up for. So really, expose them to as many things as we can, and then giving them the steps in order to get there. We also did a field trip to the trades, Construction Trades Fair this spring, and at that place, they had everything from concrete to plumbers to insulating, and the kids, the cool part about it was the kids got to go around and actually do things, like the picture in the lower right there, there's some students that are forming up a wall for pouring concrete. They get hands-on experiences there, so they go, oh, that was pretty cool, maybe I'll look into that as, as a career. So we're trying to expose them to as many things as we can. Obviously, there's some things we can't expose them to, we can't do a whole lot of electrical stuff, but we've just recently had an electrician come in and talk about, you know, what they do, and how they got to where they are, so trying to expose them to as many different careers as possible. One thing I wanna back up on is that the partnership with CASE has been amazing. Them accepting our students to come out there and run those machines is, is crazy in this day and age, but not only that, but we just received a $25,000 grant for a new CNC router in our shop, so they have been a huge supporter of Tomahawk, and Tomahawk Tech Ed, and CTE, and they're always wanting to help, so kudos to CASE for all their help.
So Career Technical Student Organizations, I am the advisor for the Skills USA chapter that we just started this year. So we went to our first competition on Friday, we actually had the students compete, and I brought my officers along so they could also see what it was all about. So we were able to compete in a welding competition, and one of our other students did a CO2 dragster competition. Unfortunately, we didn't place, but it was a good thing for them to get out there and try it out. We have a meeting tomorrow to decide if we're gonna try to take students to state. Basically, what they're doing is getting hands-on, real-life experiences again, where they're being judged, they have to wear certain attire, they have to present a resume, some, in some cases, there's an actual interview process, and the competition list is well beyond the two that I just listed, there's, there's multiple opportunities for students of all walks of life to get involved with that, so we're working on growing that already. We've got about twenty active members this year, in its first year, so we're working to grow that bigger.
So FBLA is under my arm, that's Future Business Leaders of America, that's been active in the school for a while. We picked up with some of the state-sponsored things a few years ago, there's a regional competition every year, which actually just was this past Saturday. Still verifying a couple of participation scores, but the previous two years, we've had multiple kids qualify to, to go to state, which alters between Madison and Green Bay, and similar to what Ryan talked about, dozens of different opportunities for kids to, to show and show their business-related skills, anything from accounting, finance, management, leadership, speaking, you name it, anything from tests taken before the competition, to tests taken on-site, to live performances and things of that nature. And the state competitions are normally late March, early April is when those fall. But again, finally getting into the state-sponsored end of it the last couple of years, the kids have, the kids are learning what it takes to get there, and similar to like Ryan talked about as well, when they go, that's full business dress, they're very strict about it, and it really teaches them what the expectations are when they get into that part of the world, and what's gonna be, how they're gonna be held accountable, so they get to apply those things they learned in class and see how it really plays out as they have the, I'm sure in your case too, they have the community members in the area that are, that are the judges, so they see the stuff firsthand.
And then I'm the advisor for FCCLA, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, and through FCCLA, students are always able to choose a project that they would like to make a difference. A lot, I think it's awesome that a lot of our students always choose projects that make a difference within the community or within the school. There's tons of different options they can do, they can do a project that they don't have to work with anybody, and they can do it all on their own, like a job interviewer, looking into different jobs, but a lot of our students always pick something to make a difference in the community, and I support that, I think that's a great pick on their end. Some of the things that we've done in the past, like last year, they did, they were part of Working with Children was their category, so they were making the safety shades for the school district, and we worked with the Girl Scouts, and Kay Kissinger came in with the Girl Scouts, and we made the safety shades, saving the district thousands of dollars, and they wanted to expand on that project, not only because they wanted to help make a difference at St. Mary's, but St. Mary's also reached out to us and wanted to get those as well. So the FCCLA group were making this, already did and put them up in place, the safety shades for St. Mary's for if there was ever a lockdown or anything like that. We've been lucky, not lucky, we've been working hard, and students have advanced on the Nationals for the last four years, which is a huge accomplishment, because they go to regionals, and when they go to regionals, they compete against a rubric, so they know what they're getting judged on. We prepare, they practice their speech, their speech is usually anywhere from five to ten minutes, and they have it memorized and dressed properly, and for the judges if they don't know, and they're competing against that rubric. But when they go to state, they compete against everybody at state. And for each category, they only take you to the top or the top two. And I always think, for somebody to go to Nationals, or for us to have a group to go to Nationals every year when they're only taking the first or first and second place is a huge accomplishment. We didn't attend Nationals last year just due to COVID, but we've always attended Nationals years before, and students are super excited this year to hopefully attend Nationals if they were to get to that point, and I think if they work hard, they would be able to. So it's just awesome to see all the different skills they learn. Obviously, you can see in all of our CTSOs, a lot of it is really getting that practice of being professional, going up in front of somebody and talking. That is nerve-wracking for a lot of people in any situation, you know, you are sometimes comfortable talking in front of somebody, and you go into a different crowd and you're uncomfortable. Like, I can say it, that happens to me, like, we all can say that. So it's, it's a great opportunity for them to have that, and we come back and, you know, we just think about what, what went wrong, what went great, what can we do and being able to fix it. So I'm excited to see where FCCLA goes this year, and we have regionals at the end of this month, and hopefully they're able to advance on state.
One of the things that Ally didn't mention, or that I forgot to, we've had a couple of partnerships between our clubs, and the one that might be visible, at least many of you, Benessin Feed, obviously, we, we've participated and been down there, you know, selling shirts and beverages and chili and stuff like that, we had to fill in for you this year, you know, you might have kids and such, so, but, but it's, that's worked out well, that's one, that's a visible thing, but hopefully you're seeing that that's not the only thing that the kids in these groups do, there's a lot of other things going on behind the scenes, it's just one thing that many people happen to see and then probably just associate with us, and there's a lot more going on.
Yeah, and Halloween on Main Street, and a lot of times when we do things, we're usually selling something or promoting our clubs, and, I feel like FCCLA students made cupcakes, forgot to say that, so they would've been mad if I would've not said that, so they made cupcakes for you guys today, but like when we go to Benessin Feed, we've done a chili sale, and Halloween on Main Street, and Mother's Day weekend, when they do the, I think there's something, I can't remember the name of it, that was like, I don't know, there was something in May one year that we did, that was Mother's Day weekend, and we were out there doing things as well. So it's great to get out there and see the community support us as well.
So Hatchet Innovations is one of the new classes where we're taking physical products and making them for, for everybody. Each of you has a box in front of you, our class actually put those together, so if you haven't already, you can open your box. Inside your box is a laser engraved tumbler, we have a laser engraved glass poster, also a wood poster, and we have two vinyl stickers, one is just the Tomahawk test global, and the second is the FCCLA global. So those are the things that we're creating, not only for the Tomahawkers inside the school, at a lot cheaper cost typically, but we're also creating them for outside items, like coupons that are made in order and have a second order on the way to buy. That is a cleaning spot, it comes with the.
Love it!
Yes. So we actually put together the box as well, so that box was made on our vinyl cover paper, just like the vinyl stickers work, on top of your box, so we were able to cut and print those out for a month or four days, and we had the box as well. So everything that was done is done by students in my Hatchet Innovations class. On the pop one in front, we have a student who's been streaming the month awards, we were able to do middle school Unity Day stickers, so they hand out stickers to every one of their students in the middle school for Unity Day. And we've also been able to collaborate a little bit with the art program, we made some makers' marks, which is what they use to stamp into their ceramic items when they, when they're making those. So these are just some of the things that that class is doing, and that's a new class this year, that was approved last year, so that class is also growing from here now too.
Enterprise Wood Products is a class where the students get broken into groups, and they are gonna partner with a local business to make a product, where the students have to do a cost analysis. So the students will engineer an, an idea, and then they'll make a prototype, and then they'll go out and partner with a local business and basically take orders, you know? Like, you see a couple up there, there's pass cribbage boards, there's a couple of welcome signs, this year we have everything from tip-down stands for ice fishy to serving trays for the cheese shop. So they're partnering with a business, and they're doing a cost analysis, how much does it cost for us to build this? How much do we have to. How much do we have to make on it? How much does the business that's selling it have to make? So, they're looking at profit margins. And basically what they're doing in this, uh, class is they're going through and figuring out how to run a business. And they go through and make prototypes, they show them off, they present it, and then they strike a deal with the business in town. So, um, one of the coolest things as I'm looking at this again, this has just struck me, was how many local businesses that we've worked with. Uh, we're, we're working just in this class alone with probably six or seven different businesses. And we saw the thirty-some that she was working with through Youth Apprenticeship. So, there's an awful lot of local businesses that are involved and we really appreciate those partnerships. Um, to celebrate CTE Month, uh, we've been having, uh, people come in and speak as to different professions. So, we've had a heating and cooling, uh, person come in. Uh, just yesterday, we had an electrician come in and talk about his job. And it was, um, Nick was a student of mine a few years ago and now he's an electrician, master electrician. And it was really good for the students to see, alright, this guy was sitting in this chair, the same chair I'm sitting in. And these were his steps to get to be a master electrician. And what kinds of classes did he like, you know? So, they could kind of see themselves in that spotlight. And after he was done speaking, two kids came up and asked him for a job shadow to come and research the, the career a little bit more. So, we're doing, we're bringing in a lot of people to speak. Some of these things we just can't do because of legal reasons and liability. You can't have them wiring up outlets in the school. Um, but we can have them come in and then we can have, set up job shadows if they find an interest in it. We also have Mitch Shower coming in for portable welding. Talk about a little different aspect. Nick is an employee, uh, whereas Mitch is the manager there. So, they're getting both perspectives of owning a business versus being an employee. So, when Mitch comes, he's going to talk about, alright, this will get you fired. This will get you promotions. And the kids can see, alright, this is what I need to do. Interestingly enough, as I've been listening to him talk, every one of them have said just about the same thing. Show up early, be there every day and have a good attitude. We'll treat, teach you everything else you need to know. So, they're getting that message over and over. And I think that's a lot of what students need to hear from people other than just teachers because that sometimes falls on deaf ears. Um, but it's, it's really reinforcing what we're trying to teach them. We also have Donovan Beacon from, uh, to talk about plumbing and Jim Badensrad coming in to talk about carpentry. Uh, we also have Josh Shafensky coming in for gas utilities. So, we're trying to expose them to as many different careers that are out there that they can go right into the world of work and make a very good living.
For the FCS department, we just had the Wisconsin, a representative from the Wisconsin Beef Council in. Uh, and the Wisconsin Beef Council, we also get grants through them to buy beef products for the classes. So, that's awesome, thanks to them. And in the medical terminology class next week, we have live from the heart. Uh, usually we go to Nicolay and do that. We are going to be doing it from here in the auditorium. And they are live watching open heart surgery, um, that's going on down in Chicago. So, that's awesome for them. And then also on Friday next week, we will be going to Nicolay for them to see the facility over there and all the different health, um, options and health departments. And they have an anatomage table there, which is just a really fancy table where you can play with all the different muscles and see all the kinesiology and use their medical terms. And it's awesome that they're going to be able to go there and see Nicolay and, um, look at all the different options they have. And something else I want to focus on too is that we talk about February being CTE Month, but when we think of things that we do every month, every single month, we're doing things. Um, this month, we're doing a lot, but I feel like it's the same as we're doing every month. You know, today, we found out when Nicolay's, um, competition day is, which is in April. And we take students for different categories to that. So, today, we're going out looking at who's interested in firefighting. And if that's what they put on their ACP plan, we went and talked to them. Like I looked, uh, reached with the guidance counselors and we looked at who's, that they're interested in getting into criminal justice. And that's something that's also, um, as a competition for when we go there. So, when we go to competition day in April, again, uh, CTE teachers, um, Brian and I go and some of the others go sometimes too. We take students to compete in the different competitions there. Um, my students do a cupcake competition. There's welding, there's idle tech. So, I just want to also focus that February is CTE month, but we're happy that we get to do things every month.
And then the last handful that are there, uh, obviously in, in class, like Andy said, not always can we offer them every opportunity in class, but like biology and veterinary science, I've got someone speaking virtually to the kids. That's, that's been in that industry for about fifteen years. And she's also just finished work to be able to not only do the job, but she's actually doing some part-time adjunct teaching down at Madison, uh, Madison Area Technical College. Um, marketing and sales, uh, I've got one of their senior, uh, sales managers who are basically east of the Mississippi coming in to talk to the kids about that. And then I'm narrowing down a couple of dates with, um, uh, actually, uh, somebody down at, uh, TCB to come in and talk about the finance and banking piece. Uh, and along with, uh, business ownership and higher ed, uh, the dean, the, the two B dean of the business department at Nicolay. My loose plan to get her in, we've talked about it, just have to narrow down a date for her. So, like Ally said, there's a lot going on every month. It just kind of gets focused on a little bit more this particular month. So, that was a load. So, if you have questions or comments or, uh, anything else that we can bring up to speed on or stuff like that.
We said we were going to keep it short, sweet, but we're all very excited about what we do. So, we agreed to share those.
It's obvious you're very excited, all of you. Yeah, I, I'm very impressed, you know? And you're giving the kids exposure in an environment that they're comfortable in now to get some flavor of things to make some good choices for the future. Um, I'm, I'm very impressed. And, and the, the connections with the community is very good. And the businesses, you know, all these businesses you're connecting with is just, I didn't realize it. So, I learned a lot in the last half an hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would like to say as a employee, works at where we get a lot of YA's, we just love them because they come in and they know what to expect and they, you can release their minds form. And they find out real quick if they want to do it or they don't want to do it. So, it's, it's fun watching them progress and find their way. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say it's, it's obvious you're doing an outstanding job. Congratulations.
Will this slide deck be put on our website by chance or no? Do you think?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, I keep saying, I, I think to educate the public, this is what all you're doing here. How great is that?
And thank you for these gifts. These are impressive.
Yeah, I'm using mine as soon as I get them.
We won't say, ask which one you're using.
You're using as soon as you get your vehicle.
I do have a couple of questions if the, if mine forbid. Again, I, I appreciate everything that you presented here and, and what's going on. I'm very familiar with Nicolay and the, and the, uh, dual credits and those types of things. So, uh, I've seen quite a bit of that. But just a couple of quick questions because I'm always looking for continuous improvement, you know, all the time. And, uh, the youth apprenticeship, the, the school is at eight point nine percent is, is what you've presented here. And we've got, uh, forty-six point eight percent of the students have taken some form of dual credit. How can we get more of those, that eight point nine get closer to the forty-sixth, do you think? How do we get more students involved in, in school to work and stuff?
Teaching them the benefits of youth apprenticeship and how it can lead to shortened time in a, a real apprenticeship. So, like somebody going into being an electrician. If they do, if they do the summer work, go through the youth, youth apprenticeship here and tell them that, alright, this is going to get you to the end goal on having your apprenticeship faster. I think it is more or less us just talking to the kids about the benefits of it. Part of it is, is students aren't really sure what they want to do an awful lot. Like the group we had listening to the electrician, um, I, I think there's two in there that was really interested in being an electrician. And if you ask the other seventeen that were in there, they didn't really know. Um, so, it's, it's really a big push from Ally to get as many people in there as we have in there. Um, but I think just educating the students how it can benefit them as far as down the road after school, how youth apprenticeship can help them.
Okay.
Two, when you look at the requirements for youth apprenticeship, they have to dedicate a lot of time for youth apprenticeship. When you look at the transcripted credits, we're teaching those in our classes that we're teaching already. And any student can take those classes. But for the youth apprenticeship, when you look at, I don't know, Ally's, I don't know more, how many hours, hundreds of hours that they have to do so they have to have a place that's going to employ them in order to work. It's not that we can't do it, there's just more requirements I require for that youth apprenticeship as well.
And I do think, I don't know if the number is, is exactly correct on this, this report, because I think that one's is work-based. But for YA students, why is like, yeah, it's way higher because, um, because like when we do our seniors, so seniors of twenty, graduating class of twenty-one, um, we had over twenty seniors have a YA certificate. So, when you figure out the percentage of seniors that graduate, I don't know the number of how many seniors in the twenty-one class, but it's definitely way higher than that percentage. So, there is some,
It gives like almost ninety.
Yeah, so when you have twenty-some, twenty-some students of that senior class had it. So, I, something, yeah, it has to do with like the record, the way it was recorded, um, which I think is just like with Skyward changing some stuff. Um, so we can actually, and I can get numbers too, but we are way higher than that percent.
Right, if I could add, just from an administrative lens, resources-wise, staffing. Staffing plays a critical role in being able to have programs like this. And so, when you look, for example, I mean, Ally does a phenomenal job, but she only has one hour day to work in all these businesses. And a lot of that work goes into evening hours and weekends and things like that. And so, you know, while, while she does a tremendous job with, with the time she has to expand, you're going to need to look at possibly more staffing. And that involves, the, the business connection is huge going out and recruiting new businesses. Um, you know, we talked about more kids getting involved. We've done things in the past, for example, working with our employers, especially in the manufacturing areas with child labor laws. And a lot of their misunderstandings around awareness of what actually can a student under eighteen, age of eighteen do in my place of business? And many times they find out, they can do a lot more than you think. And so, by getting out and organizing those kinds of events and making connections with DWD to bring in those experts and talk businessperson to businessperson helps to break down some of those barriers. And really, you need, you need that person or those people to be able to facilitate those, those programs and conversations and connections to, to continue to grow. It's not just the student side, it's, it's that business side that's supporting as well. So, administratively, staffing is huge to see things like that grow.
Well, one thing you can, you can use if you want, you can use my name if you want to, is, uh, contact the Workforce Development Board. They have an individual that is there specifically to work with business and to, to get business involved with the schools and, and so forth. It, that may be something you want to reach out to instead of having to do it all yourself. They have a person that's actually dedicated to do that, those types of things. So, it's, uh, uh, they can help a little bit too.
Great information, thanks.
And then, uh, I'm on a roll, so.
Go ahead.
Alright, uh, out of the, out of the forty-six, uh, where am I at here? Okay, forty-six point eight percent that took the dual credits or dual credit. Do we have any idea what percent, percentage of them went in?
Took advantage of it.
Took advantage of it, went to school in that area, anything like that?
That's data, that's hard to track. And basically, it involves the reports that we can get back from post-secondary. So, for example, we'll send out, uh, surveys to our graduating seniors the year after the following. Very low percentage comes back. So, ultimately, we rely on the reports that would come back just from a technical college system and four-year program. And those aren't always good data points to get back. They're, they're not always consistent. So, we ask and sometimes we get, but even the reliability of that data is a little bit, uh, I, I don't know that I'd put a ton of weight on it, being accurate, it's probably higher than what it shows.
Okay, and then I guess my, um, one last question, then I'll shut up, is, uh, Andy, how much, how much have we been able to get, and I'll pick on them, PCA, LP, and these people, Harley Davidson, involved?
Well, um, P, uh, LP is, is enormous with our building trades. Without them, I don't know that we financially survive because they donate so many materials to us every year. And they do offer to take kids on a field trip through there. And every so often, we take them up on it. Um, PCA and Harley, I believe Mr. Ryder's working on a field trip to go through with them. Um, as far as hitting them up for money is what I'm, are you thinking of that or just?
I'm looking at it as, I think there's some areas that, you guys do a great job, okay? But I think there's some areas that we could make improvements in and expand the program. One of them is industrial electricians. The other one is, uh, uh, journeymen, you know, uh, journeyman electrician, or journeyman electrician, journeyman welders, journeyman mechanics, that area, you know? And, uh, IT and robotics, those types of things. Uh, and I know it takes people and money and stuff like that. But I think that, uh, and I appreciate that you're bringing people in from the outside. But I think it, I think the kids should also hear about people from the, you know, an industrial electrician as well as, uh, uh, I don't know what you call it, what I call a regular electrician or whatever. But I think the industrial side of it can also be helpful because they're looking for people too. I mean, I just looked in the paper and I saw PCA is looking for labor pool people. And they move into, uh, uh, mechanical positions when they have the opportunities. And I know Harley has been, I was told Harley's looking to hire a hundred people.
So, for Harley, we, we work with Harley for YA and we fill the positions that the YA's can do, but they can't get into those other positions.
I know, I'm, I understand totally. I was involved with it, so.
And, and it is all about,
I fought a lot of people about that, but I lost.
And our IT YA students, um, one of our IT students actually is employed by Tomahawk School District and worked with Dean during the summer. And he's a great mentor to him and, um, does IT through the radio station as well. So, at least we get a little bit, but yeah, it'd be awesome to get more students in that type of trade.
The, the electrician we had in is also a journeyman.
Yeah.
So, he had talked about it, you know, that's as far as,
Yeah, well, you know, there's a difference between industrial electrician and a, and a typical regular electrician.
I think Nicolay with their new expansion here in their new building and taking a tour up there too is going to open some eyes as well. I know we're a part of that and creating that up there and that. But I think getting that introduced to some of these students in the school, we haven't really looked at it, you know, a lot. And I think they're going and expanding as well.
Okay, I just, I, I'm just, the reason I, I say this and bring this stuff up, everything I hear, that's, this is where the, this is where the jobs are at in the future, is in tech ed and you're going to need after high school, some kind of education. Not necessarily a four-year, could be a tech ed department, whatever it happens to be. But everything I hear in the next ten years, that's, this is where the jobs are at, you're going to be at, so.
And I think we're going to see some of our students moving into it. Like, um, some of our YA students work at Daigo Brothers and they'll be getting the construction YA pathway. And I showed them, you know, how they're going to bridge it over to an RA and Daigo Brothers, so they'd be working with them. So, I mean, that's pretty cool too. And then, um, actually Andy's son is one of our YA's through an HVAC company out of Monacoa. And they do residential and commercial jobs as well, so.
Okay, good.
We are getting a little thing to it, but I would say, you know, majority of it is re- residential. But, um, you know, it'd, it'd be nice to get more into industrial and commercial. But sometimes I just don't always have those opportunities here.
No, it's, it's not easy.
Yeah, it'd be a good connection to make.
I can appreciate it because I was there trying to get them in.
So, I just want to comment administratively. Again, as you, as a board, asking what you can do to support those things, to get into that electromechanical world. Obviously, it's going to take coursework that's developed and designed by the staff in conjunction with the technical college, but then you're going to need thirty thousand dollars for a trainer, you know, to do those hydraulics and manics types of pieces of equipment to, to teach those principles. So, you know, putting it back in a board lens, what's coming to the future to, to have those kinds of opportunities? It's going to take great teachers and connections with those other places, businesses and colleges. But in the end, you're also going to support the curriculum through the tools and things that are needed.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a way, that can be done. I mean, some of that stuff can be done, not the teacher side of it, but the equipment, stuff like that. Uh, that, that can be addressed, you know, outside of the taxpayers. Businesses can donate that stuff. Uh, but anyway, I'll shut up and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
One thing that, you know, talk in, in like what you were saying there is with how we get some of this equipment. Uh, our innovation lab is mainly funded by people writing grants. So, you know, Mr. Hughes will be writing a twenty thousand dollar grant, us getting Case grant. You know, there's a lot of effort that goes in to these people outside of teaching to get that equipment so our kids have it here. Uh, so, there's a lot going on with a lot of things to produce what we have available to students today, so.
I oftentimes wonder how you teach and write grants. I go, where do they find the time?
Yep.
So, thank you.
Sorry, we definitely put in the extra time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You can sit down now. You can sit down now. Okay, next is, uh, item nine is, uh, S R three plan. And Wendell, you doing that?
Uh, Wendy and I will be presenting this tonight.
Okay.
Tell you, we're probably not going to be nearly as fun or as interesting as what you just heard, but we are best, so. Um, so, so, um, recently the state was approved to release their S R three funds. And, uh, what we want to do tonight is present just our initial plan for how we are going to meet the requirements to acquire those funds and also how we plan to spend those funds and use them to move our district forward. So what you'll notice as we move forward, so this is on the board, but we also have a hard copy. We also try to provide you copies with, um, the links that this leads to. So you should have most of it. As we go through, um, before we continue, just, we are looking for feedback. So keep that in the back of your minds as we present this. You are one of the stakeholder groups that we do, uh, want to know what your priorities and your input for how this money should be spent as well. So whether that comes tonight or as you digest some of this and think about it, uh, can shoot us an email and we'll incorporate that, um, into that final plan. So you'll notice as we go through that, um, this, this round of S R funding is very similar to S R one and S R two, uh, but there are some, some differences. It comes with a lot more accountability for one, and that's part of, of this planning process. So these are one-time funds, and I, I want to make sure that that's stressed and that that's public. These are not ongoing funds. They're provided, um, in a one-time allotment, and they have to be spent and used up by a certain date, in this case, twenty twenty-four. And basically they have to be spent according to a very strict, uh, plan that we, uh, submit to the D P I. Um, so, basically on this next slide, if you switch over, uh, the groups that you'll see listed here are all of the, uh, groups that will have input into our final plan. Uh, so currently where we are in this process is our administrative team is met. We've come up with what we feel are priorities and, and a plan for how to spend this money where it would best benefit our district. Um, we're coming to you tonight as a board to solicit some more feedback and information on where your priorities lie. Uh, and then beyond that, we're going to be looking into branching out into our community members, our students and our staff as well. So we're going to do that a couple of different ways. We do have a brief survey that we will make available to them. And then Wendy and I will also be hosting a community presentation on February twenty-first. Um, and then ultimately we'll return that final plan to you for approval uh, at the March eighth, uh, regular board meeting, uh, before the deadline, which is the eleventh. So we will submit that then between that point, uh, in March eleventh. So on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the actual allocation. We're, we're set to receive just over one point two million dollars, uh, in this round of funding over a couple of years that we'll have to spend that. I do want to reiterate this money has to be earmarked, it has to be used uh, to address learning loss and achievement gaps that will produce directly in relation to that COVID disruption that we've had, uh, over the past couple of years. So the funds are intended for two things. One, to help schools safely reopen, which in our case, we are open to in-person learning and have been. Uh, so we will use them mainly to help sustain that safe operation, uh, through the rest of this and, and any impacts, address any impacts that, um, that we've encountered to this point. So I'll turn it over to Wendy, she's going to talk a little bit more about the specifics of our plan itself.
Okay, so that one point two approximate million dollars that we get allotted, so we split it into two years, so approximately six hundred thousand for two years. So as part of that, there's twenty percent of those funds have to be spent on, what you'll see on your slides is E B I S. So that's evidence-based improvement strategies. So we have to look at where, where are, where are gaps that our kids experience due to that shutdown and closure? So what we look to is we look to our strategic plan, uh, that we put together, and we've tried to align that with our state report card data and what our data is showing us on where kids really need help. So we wanted to keep in mind those pillars on how we can help staff and how we can help students in the community as well as make good use of the funds. So that twenty percent, we worked with CISA because they, you know, are experts on it as well, so, and they're a resource in our backyard and we have a good staff there, and they worked with us to look at, okay, what do we really see as a need? So we really focused on our E L A scores because of that lack of instruction in person. That's what we're seeing in our report cards and gaps. So how can we address that in that twenty percent? So that twenty percent then would be used to fund an interventionist, not a new add-on position, but to maintain one of those positions that we brought back through that S R two funding last time. So it's not adding, it's continuing that through that two thousand four. And then to contract through CISA to help develop our plan so that we can eventually do it on our own with those interventionists and our staff, provide professional development and training, and then continue those practices for, for our students and our staff, to support them in strategies. So that gives kind of a summary up there, I'm not going to read it to you, that's what CISA put together, worked on the administrative team when we planned it. And then, um, the other eighty percent, um, well, about seventy-three percent, because I'll talk about those, there's a little snippet of seven percent that's an add-on. But the other seventy-three percent of that, again, is a continuation mostly of our S R two funding to support those goals, again, tied with the strategic plan and those identified areas where we're lagging to maintain an interventionist, the director of teaching and learning, um, the special, a special education teacher, which we posted for three years, and we haven't found one yet, but we're hopeful, so that we can address some of that learning. And then because it's not just for learning, it's also to maintain safe environment in schools, the continuation of, um, safe practices for facilities. So some of Ireland's things, we're building in grounds, air purifiers, filtration, different things that we need to maintain a safe environment. You know, so that means, means healthiness for our students and staff. Um, so that's where the rest of it goes. And then the state added on a little seven percent tag that you have to be identified for after-schools, for before-school programs and enrichment, extended school year programs or summer school. So that comes up to about forty-two thousand for all of those areas together to work on extending that learning into those out-of-school hour times to help families out. You know, it could be homework help, it could be hiring career professionals, you know? And that will come from our community input when we do that survey. Are these things that you feel is beneficial? And then, you know, and then that will direct the decisions that we can do on March eighth. So this is just also, the D P I and federal government has, says you have to focus on specifically identifying considerations with these groups as well. So when we develop those plans and the interventions and training that we do with our staff to focus and make sure that we're really hitting on these areas to booster those kids up to in addition to our general student body. And then, so then this is where, you know, we want to get your thoughts on, on our plan. Um, what, after we give our presentations, so we'll, and we'll do it with the community as well. You know, what things have we, did we not talk about that you want to address? Um, what, you know, just like Ron talked about and the C T E team talked about in the community, what assets can we bring in from our community and outside resources can we partner with to work on our strategies? And then, our plan for safe return, that's the other big packet. That was a requirement that we had to talk about, all the things we did to come back to safe return, which we're back, we're in it, that big packet, if you wanted to look at it, you know, at your leisure. I could read it to you, obviously. Um, but those are all the things we did to get here, and that has to be posted on our website as well. So that will be uploaded and posted as well as this plan we're talking about now. And how would we continue learning if we got to another shutdown again? So that's of the single sheet, um, the administrative team worked on that, and we wanted to be comprehensive in that. So we talked about, um, what if a single student had to quarantine or had an illness, you know, that they couldn't come to school? So that's the first column in that, so what will we do for that student that if there was an interruption? And then the middle column talks about if we had an emergency, emergency shutdown for COVID, where we had to shut down or some other, who knows what could happen, you know? We had a water main break the other day, if something happened where we had to be closed down for an extended period, more than a couple of days, what will we do to keep that learning going so that we don't have those interruptions again? And then the last column is, um, if we had an inclement weather or just a quick shutdown where we were prepared. Everybody got the email last week, we were prepared if the water main wasn't ready. We were ready to learn that day and go, so if it's a short shutdown, we're ready to go and meet the needs of students and families. So that's that other sheet. And then I think it's you.
And so next steps, and, and I covered this a little bit, but just so you guys know kind of the outline and the timeframe of, of what we're doing. So we, for tonight, we're presenting this initial plan, this draft of a plan. Then on the twenty-first, we will have our community session. Uh, in between that time, we'll be sending out the survey and collecting that information as well. It'll, we'll put that together, we'll bring the final plan back here on March eighth at the regular meeting. Uh, once that's approved, we work with Sandy, she submits it through, uh, Y A's. We went through that process with CISA, um, had Casey Gratzinger actually go through and sent us some videos so we know exactly what to expect and that, how long it'll take us to put this whole plan into Y A's. And then, uh, ultimately that has to be revisited and updated every six months moving forward. Um, you know, so that we're on track with our plan and we can, uh, make sure that we're meeting all the requirements that, that we put in place as well. So like I said, this isn't like the other two rounds of S R funds where they were basically allocated to the school and there were some loose guidelines on how you could use it, you could get creative. This is very specific to the plan that we submit, and then we're going to be able to come up with that plan, um, moving forward. The next two slides basically would be more for our community presentation, but also if you want more information, want to learn more, the D P I has an S R three page on their website. It has a ton of information on it, um, you can, you can read a lot of that as well, so. And that's, that's about it.
So again, the bulk of the plan again was the identification as that team on how to address that learning gap, how to provide, provide training and resources to teachers and parents as we're going. And that's where it ties into those staffing additions that, not additions, but continuations that we have from that S R two funding so that we're looking at that data and finding the best ways to reach our students.
Are these, uh, are these funds, uh, has the state said that they have to be spent over a certain period of time?
Yes, we have to spend them by twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so it's the two years, that's what you, the two years you're talking about, it has to be spent by then?
Yep.
And they identified the percentage breakout that you mentioned, the twenty percent, seventy-three and the seven.
The twenty percent we have just identified from them.
Yeah, that was still.
For that, we, and we had, there was a menu of strategies to pick from, um, and you'd have to choose one of their approved strategies. And the one that we chose when we met with CISA that we felt best met our needs was after looking at that data from the state report cards with our E L A, our reading gaps, and to try and really give staff the tools so that we can use those scores and identify those needs and so that we can better address that. And that's why we want to look at interventionist in that portion.
It's important to note, too, um, the plan itself, uh, once we finalize everything, will be posted and made public. So there is some transparency there too as well.
Any other questions? Okay.
You're going to share the results of the survey that you're going to do with the board prior to March?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, next item is staff reports. Who wants to go first, Ryan?
Sure. Um, I'll keep my part a little bit brief, I know Stacy's going to mention a couple of things. But, um, I just always like to point out each year that we start, uh, course scheduling for next year in the high school, collaborating with the middle school on our incoming eighth graders. So I always like to bring that up because it's such a significant part of our academic and career plan for students. And no matter what phase they're in, whether it's, you know, knowing themselves or exploring and experiencing and starting to put together a plan wherever they might be because it shifts. Their course selection is always a big part of that. And one of the reasons why it takes so long to build a student schedule for them is, uh, basically with the, the method in which we schedule, we're ultimately, we're staffing based on student requests. And the really positive or great thing about that is if, for example, you see a lot of students in their academic and career plans needing to be in tech ed, for example, you can always staff those parts of tech ed where those course enrollments are. If now all of a sudden there's a lot of staffing or additional staffing needed for an A P course because of an academic and career plan, you can shift your staffing around where the student need is. And so when you look at that, that's why it takes months and months to, to be able to work through that schedule and try to work on all the different conflicts and things that come into play. So I just always like to bring that out because for us, it's such a huge part of what we do in the high school, depending on student needs with their course selection. So that's one part I just wanted to highlight, and again, all the different, you know, teachers, counselors, obviously they have a key role in that, working between a high school and middle school, coordinating with teachers and counselors, uh, it's, it's a big effort. But, um, in the end, I think it puts together a really good product for our students being able to access what they need. Any questions on that?
Stacy?
Standing outside and speaking for two. So the two things I would just point out to you is, um, the board report would be, um, number one, we had our practice A C T for students last week. It actually got bumped back a week because it was supposed to be the week before, but we had school canceled for inclement weather. But Mr. Ryder quickly rebounded and he did it on, uh, last Wednesday. And we had about forty students participate and students were able to get their scores right away. And with that, um, we also have opportunities for juniors during resource hour to, um, practice different areas of the test, um, test-taking strategies, uh, that we offer through resource hour with our E L A, math, social studies, science departments. All, teachers all take different times, different, we have like a calendar and they take different slots so kids can pick, um, different areas to compare. So the A C T test is coming up on March eighth, um, for our juniors. And, um, uh, information will be going out to families, our ninth, tenth and twelfth grade students, just like last year, will have a remote day that day, um, so the juniors will just be in the buildings. We have a good testing environment for those kids. So it's kind of the A C T update. And then, um, this week, Thursday, we're doing a social follow-up with our lead crew kids again. Um, leaders getting back with their crews, trying to make some more connections, doing some relationship building, um, and a fun activity before we have our four-day weekend coming up here. So, a fun activity that involves, um, getting to think about deeper things in the preparation that they've gone through with the coordinators to help them.
For the A C T practice, does, do we have any data on their, uh, average score?
Actually, Mr. Ryder was just talking about that. I don't have exactly what they, what it is, but yes, he does, he did, he was able to track that as well.
Okay.
So. He, what, what the comment that he made was, it was kind of, the kids that were expecting to, kind of where they thought they would be is kind of where they ended up being on their practice test with their score. Like, they matched up pretty similarly to what the kids thought where they would be. But I don't have the exact breakdown, he was talking toward it though.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you. Wendell or guy?
Go ahead.
Um, so, most of the stuff that I have on my board report, I've previously reported on, but now they've actually, some of these events have actually happened. Uh, the one update to, that I do want to add is to the spelling bee, which occurred yesterday. We did have a state qualifier in Elliot O'Connor. So he's going to be, um, competing, uh, down in Madison on March twenty-sixth. So kudos to him. In my understanding, it was a, a back and forth for quite some time, uh, and it worked out well for him, so. Um, I did provide a couple of links there. I know I talked about mini-business world in the past, that's happened since our last board meeting too. I want to thank two guest speakers that we had come in and talked to the groups about their experience with entrepreneurship. And that was Kelly, Kelly Embry from Hometown Chiropractic and Mike Belial from Coaster Psycho Works. Uh, both did a, a really good job working with the kids, answering their questions. They had a lot of questions, which I was pretty excited about, but, um, that's always a, a really great event. And I did, uh, find a link there to present that website has changed. Uh, but this one here provides quite a bit of information about, about what that day looks like for our students as well. And then in our hatchet highlights, I did highlight some staffing adjustments that we had, uh, right at semester time too. So if you want to take a peek at that, and, um, and that will all end most of those, so. Any questions on any of that stuff? Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Uh, for the elementary, I tried to give you an update on what's happening in some different areas of the building. Um, staffing has been a, kind of a challenge, and I think it's just going to continue to be. So when we have the opportunity to bring a student teacher or somebody working in an education program, um, we've tried to get those people back if they want to come back to Tomah. So right now we have Cole Woodall, and, uh, he's currently doing a student teaching placement in third and first grade. And then, uh, Mackenzie Werner has expressed an interest, and she's. And then Mackenzie Werner expressed an interest and she's going to be a student's elementary methods block with one of our first grade teachers. So with that in mind, the staffing, one thing, a couple of things I did not mention here was summer school. I'm starting to look at summer school. And last year after COVID, we did a remedial summer school and we barely got the staffing to hold that. This year, I'd like to go back to the enrichment and remedial, having those two options, but staffing is going to be an issue. I put the emails out to our staff and then I hadn't, I've only been here four years, so I only had one others year where I did the remedial and enrichment before the COVID. And I hadn't posted the position, but because of our lack of interest amongst our staff, I did post it and I haven't gotten much return. So I'm worried about the staffing. If we can't do the enrichment because of lack of staff, we may end up with the remedial. When I looked at our numbers, right now, we have about eight people that expressed an interest. We would need to have at least 10 to do the remedial. To do both, we would probably have to be around the 18 area, so we're very short. And in order to do that, we gotta get some information out to the families and that's kind of the month of March. So we got a early start on it, but it was because of the concern I had with staffing that I thought we better start looking now. The other thing I wanted to highlight that I didn't have in the report was February 25th, we're doing a 4K registration day. We did this a couple of years ago before COVID. It was a nice time for our families to come in, get to know us and us to get to know them. It was received well, so we're going to hold that again February 25th so they can come in and meet our teachers and we get a better connection, I think, with our families that way. So do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you. You know, Swinney?
I'm good.
You're good?
I did my fair for me.
Okay. North Joe, do you have anything?
Just a couple of things. Our referendum planning committee has been putting together a series of informational sessions so we can get obviously information out to the public regarding the referendum. And Deb Valu has done a lot of work on this. Anyway, so far, we have 12 different sessions, I guess you would say, where either representatives of the district are going out to various sites or we're obviously inviting people here at school so they can hear the, get the information in regard to why the referendum is being proposed and how critical it is to the future of this school district. There was one session last week with the city council and the next one is going to be tomorrow evening and the town, outline townships representatives are invited in at that particular session. In addition, there will be two public sessions held at this time. One will be on March 17th and the other one will be on March 21st and that'll be at 6:00 PM here at school. So we hope the public takes advantage of these sessions and we're doing everything we can to reach out and again, inform people of, give them information regarding the referendum. Just a reminder, many people I'm sure know this, but on February 11th is Friday and also on Monday, there's no students or no, no school for students and staff will also have the opportunity to take some well-deserved time off, so that's a good thing. And also, one more thing, we are at day two in terms of the number of days we used up in regard to inclement weather. There's three days that are built into the calendar, so we got one more that we could possibly use. And then after that, we'd have to make up some time, so what we're talking about doing administratively is if we do go over three days, making those virtual days. Hopefully, we won't get that far, but if that's the case, we, we would very strongly consider virtual at that point. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Finance report, Joe, do you want to go through that?
Sure. Okay, in regard to the finance report, as I indicated to the, indicated to the finance committee and information that was provided, currently, the district has $108,480 in a checking account at Tomahawk Community Bank. And a savings account at the bank, there's $3,774,000 there. And there's currently a little over $7 million invested in the local government pool investment. At this time, there's a little bit, there's additional funds and there usually are in the savings account at the local bank and that's because tax dollars are coming in. As soon as additional tax dollars come in, then that'll also be forwarded to the local government pooled investment where the district does get a little better return on the investments at this time. In terms of the budget overall, again, as I indicated to the finance committee, expenditures seem to be coming in a little bit less than was projected and revenue seemed to be coming in a little bit higher than was projected, so that's a good thing. But the bottom line still is that when the budget was finalized for this school year, the district, as we know, still is ending up or projected at that time to have a deficit of $1.8 million. So that could change a little bit, obviously, over the year here, but again, that's one of the main reasons why the referendum is so critical to the district is to make up that amount and then also prepare for the next few years, so that's the financial report.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, next agenda item is capital projects. Ireland, you gonna present?
Again, we live in an interesting time, which has made this a lot of fun trying to figure out what we can do, what we've got. We all have the list in front of you. Quite a few of these things should look familiar, they were on last year's. As things shifted, they basically got bumped. You know, we had water main replacement last year, we had the lift station that popped in, some big expenses there, so we were shifting funds. So again, the hard thing for me is with not knowing where we're gonna call up the referendum and what that's gonna mean to, you know, my budget and throwing in the supply chain issues, this is real hard to, to figure out what we can do, what we can't do. I mean, I, I still have one piece of equipment that we ordered 10 months ago that is still in limbo. It's, it's been quite a challenge. That being said, you know, again, one of the reasons I have the roofs is the first item. I do feel that that is critical. We are still kind of behind on catching up on just the age, you know? We have a huge facility, there's a lot of roofs here and the clock keeps ticking. One thing that I've been working with, you know, Joe and Sandy too, is to see, you know, where our budget's starting to fall and whether or not we can try to squeeze maybe one roof in. The difficulty we have is summer is a very short window when we have no kids to try to do a lot of these projects. And not knowing when we can actually sign a contract because we may not have the funds available makes that extremely difficult and we can't make that window with where our budget year tends to run or we have to try to do it while we have kids in school, which is not our first choice, it's very disruptive, but as we did last year, we actually had to replace several roofs while we were in session. And we might be trying to do that again this year. So again, we're working hard to see if we can reallocate some of the funds and shift things to possibly at least get one or two roofs thrown in possibly into this year before the end of this budget if we can come up with the money. But one of the roofs that's slated to be done this year is the roof above us right now. If you look to your right and left, the darkness you see is actually moisture that is coming into these walls. We have not been able to, we've had roofers out here a couple of times trying to help us find leaks, we can't find them. This is a 30-year-old roof and it's, it's past its life expectancy, so. Just, just one of the many challenges we're having. We have a, a lot of old things here that we're trying to keep up on and so here is the, the top fix. Again, roofs are key and we're gonna have to try to get creative if we can't get all of them. Again, I'm trying to put the worst, the worst to the top and see where we can hit and trying to pick ones that we can possibly do while the students are here to minimize the impact on their, their learning, but we utilize this entire facility, so it is tough. Mulch for the playground, we've reached that point that for safety reasons, the compaction of the mulch, it is just something we need to do this year, get that resurfaced around all the playground equipment so that we have the proper depth and can keep the kids safe in case somebody takes a spill out there.
What do you use for, what do you use around those playgrounds?
Well, it has to be certified. We can't just like go to the like L P and say, hey, can we grab a bunch of your mulch? We can do that for landscaping, but there are some rules and laws around what we can actually use around the playground so that we don't have to worry about impalement or something that might be mixed in with it, so. Again, the, the sanding and resurfacing of the gym floors is protecting our investment. As, as we learned again this year, a small section and that was some $80,000 to repair what damage we took. We have replaced the door seals to help, you know, decrease the likelihood, but we had a freak storm, big drought in the east and it just overwhelmed what the doors could hold back, so.
Was that covered? I'm sorry, Ireland, was that floor repair, was that covered by insurance?
It is.
Okay.
We have a thousand dollar deductible on that.
Okay. Good.
Yes, but that's how significant our raise are.
Premium, yeah.
You know, but yes, very fortunate we had it, that's why we have the insurance, but it.
We all tried not to use our insurance.
Again, we, throughout the school have a lot of aging windows, a lot of failing windows, we have a lot of heat loss. We have a few, we've been trying to put some other seals on, but it's, you know, they're, they're worn out and this got skipped previously because of the budget cuts and that those funds were shifted to pay for, you know, educating our kids, which is also a crucial part of what we do here. But just trying to get, again, where we can pick some of the worst windows, tough part is, is, you know, again, finding supplies and then finding installers. So that's, that's been a, a real struggle for us at any point trying to do. You know, we still have asbestos tiles on some of the floors in the school. We have over time been trying to, you know, remove that and replace it with a safe material. It's also where, you know, the summers and our custodians make a huge impact. I don't know how familiar you guys are with asbestos, but the key thing to asbestos for us is encapsulation, making sure that, you know, the floors are well-maintained. We don't make them, I mean, they look nice when they're nice and shiny, but the biggest thing that does for us is it protects, you know, the students and the staff from that material because we don't want it to be grinding up, so the wax is a key part to keeping that. But again, we'd still like to see if we can work it into the budget, work it into timing to try to get more and more of that out of here, just to limit the possibility of any Lockers, again, we're just trying to keep up and maintain versus having to replace. So when the kids bring in an extra pair of shoes, whatever, just that getting into the bottom of the lockers, they're metal, heats them up and we're just trying to extend the life of those, so. We do have, we do have, again, aging equipment. PK is just, is a brand name of a boiler. We have actually four boilers that heat our school, two smaller, more modern units. Unfortunately, they are over 20 years old and so we're, we're starting to have to do a little more repair, but it's one of those things, once they fail, they're just done. And it's just trying to plan for us getting to pick when we do that, preferably in the summer and not in the dead of winter when it could cost us a whole lot more due to frozen pipes or anything else if, if we lose part of our system. So don't have a crystal ball, but you know, we, I do have the experts come in, like we do with a number of our pipes and they will actually try to read the thickness of the metal, of the materials and kind of a educated guess on when it could possibly fail on us, but it's still, they're just educated guesses. Item nine. This is, so our, our main power feeds into two areas into this facility. This one is in the, located in the elementary and again, our, our school's pretty much broken up into two major pieces. Half of the high school falls into one, elementary is the other half, middle school's the other section. So this is a distribution panel, basically, all the power comes into it, it's like a set of really big breakers. One is the main that controls everything and then it steps it down to feed panels and sub panels and on down the road. This is, nobody can quite give me the date, but they're figuring it's from the late 50s. We did have some, some inspections and the guys were afraid to even switch anything off because they're afraid if they do, it won't start back up. So again, it's just, try not to scare anyone, but when these things tend to fail, they can be very bad. You know, molten metal tends to fly. Again, that's why they're contained in other rooms to be away from the kids and the staff for the most part, but we're on borrowed time with some of this equipment. So it's one of the other things, looking to see, can we possibly get this replaced before we're basically without power and then we're scrambling to try to find parts. Right now, I've got a couple contractors looking at this to go, what's even the availability? They still haven't been able to respond because nobody really knows. Until you place an order, they'll give you a date and then that date can just keep on rolling back and that's just the way things are right now. Again, the bleachers for the high school gym is on here. You know, they're, they're a very old system, they're, were grandfathered in, so all we can do is minor repairs on them. Once they are condemned, that we have to stop using them. You never know what, what inspection is gonna be that day. They get inspected once a year, we do repairs, we do a major repair with a company and then we try to keep up on, keep everything tight, but. But these particular bleachers were built before lobby fall and safety features were enacted. And so, they're also a bit of a, a risk. When those bleachers are pulled out, every section has to be pulled out together to the safe distance. Otherwise, there's no safety protection to keep somebody from falling off of an end. So, work with my staff to make sure they understand that and make sure that we don't have just anybody coming in and pulling out bleachers. Because, again, it's, it's more than just a, a nice thing to have nice new bleachers. It's, you know, it's a safety concern that we're still dealing with. Ceiling tile replacement, again, that was one that we're hoping to previously do. Over the years, those tiles continue to absorb moisture and anything else that's in the air. And so, they, they slowly start to collapse and break down. Also, the concern is that, you know, material, because they do absorb moisture to some degree, they have a, you know, they do have a lifespan where they just need to be changed out for health reasons. And again, number twelve is just trying to keep up on some of the failing pipes here. And it's something that we, again, hoping to get so much of it done every year. But even some of the newer stuff in the high school, which is twenty, twenty-one years old, we're probably gonna need to do some repairs down there because we're actually starting to see signs of possible leaks starting before we get them. So it's just age of the, the facility. Same with thirteen. Thirteen is part of our heating system. It's basically a coupler where the pipes are put together. And just over time, that, that O-ring system starts to break down and fail and we start to spring leaks. And so, we've been trying to do, you know, a few every year just so it's not so overwhelming and to try to spread out that overall cost. The art flash hazard, this is something that already has some pricing on. This is, it's kind of moving into some of the new laws that they're trying to push for everybody as far as safety, and it's a, it's a matter of checking everything we have and then also proper labeling of everything that's in the system. We've had a few things done over the years, but as we found, there's, it's such a massive building, still more to be done to bring everything up to some of the newer codes. Sidewalks, again, it's an ongoing thing. We still have a few that, we've got small pockets. They tend to be low spots where we get ice that form every time we get melting. And just trying to keep up on that instead of having to do an entire school, just picking up the worst of those sections and replacing those a couple, you know, here and there so that, again, for safety and. Elementary's got a couple issues, they've tried doing some patches there over the years. But especially along, along the south side of that main sidewalk, we get a lot of collection of ice and it's, it's really tough to try to keep that clear and keep everybody safe coming in. Parking lot, again, just trying to maintain what we have here. We kind of do this, you know, every year to two years of going through and patching up what we have, trying to fill in the, the bigger holes and just trying to extend its life. But it's, it's wearing out on us. So, this is for our swimming pool. This is a heat exchanger system. The way we heat most of our water is the boiler is a closed system. It pushes out hot water, it goes through a, a heat exchanger where that heat is passed to a, a different medium. And then that is sent throughout the school or into the swimming pool. So, with this particular one, the swimming pool water is pumped into these coils, which is being heated by our boilers that heat the entire school. And just because of the corrosive nature of that, it's just slowly wearing through it. We start to get some small pinholes, but at some point, it's just going to fail entirely. So, it's, again, trying to stay ahead of that. There's no fixing that other than replacing that whole heat exchanger. Eighteen, eighteen I struggle with because, again, this is. A lot of these units are getting near the end of their life. I've got pricing on replacement for almost everything in this building. This is just trying to extend the, the bottom of them. Anytime you heat or cool, you get condensation, you get a water collection to those pans, and it tends to slowly eat through the metal. This is trying to extend the life of them. But at some point too, we also need to look at picking the worst of the units and trying to replace one or two here and there if we can.
Arlen, are those insulated? Like on the inside, some are ins, and some are insulated on the outside? Is that right? On those air exchangers?
The newer ones are more insulated than the old ones. The old ones, it would just be where the, the fresh air comes in.
Mm-hmm.
So those are insulated, but once you get into them, then it's just, it's a, it's a steel frame. You know, pans and everything where it's been sheet metal. So there's, they're good units, but again, they're just.
Lifespan.
They've been given us a lot of good use, but they're, you know, they're some forty-plus years old. So, parts are getting harder and harder. We're having to get a little more creative, even just with some of the dampener controls. We're actually trying to work with our metal shop. Yeah, this gentleman right back here has also been a big help with us trying to fabricate parts too just to extend the life of stuff we have here in the building. But, again, creativity's only getting us so far, but we're just gonna keep doing what we gotta do, so. This one's come up for a while, but again, the, the shingles are all curled and started to, and actually something I'd like to see if, you know, if we can get the funding for the materials. Is this something I can work with, you know, Andy and his students and make it one of their projects to see if we can get them to continue to help us with repair what we have here? So, it's, it's just like our roofs here, the most critical thing is getting to that roof before it basically rots out the wood underneath and we just have to tear the whole thing down. Number twenty. This has to do with, this is more of an energy savings long-term. So a VFD is just, it's a device that allows us to slow motors down instead of running them. They're either on or off typically. This allows us to, with what the, the pool is doing, the load on the pool, slow some of these big motors down to save money for long-term savings. So that's, that's a part of what this is about and then some of the components to that. Twenty-one, again, we, we, we have this nice facility and, but again, it's. Our lighting system is, is old. We are struggling to get parts rebuilt by the manufacturer. As you know, we've got some lights out, we're still trying to see if we can convert those over to possibly LED. But everything's controlled through a large dimmer pack and most LEDs won't even function with that type of system. But it's, it's given us more and more trouble. We've lost more lights that they can actually use on stage because we've just had to abandon sections of it as it's failed. And so, looking to, you know, at, at some point, try to update that equipment or, yeah, it's pretty much update. There's not much more we can do as far as repairing to a lot of this, just because of the age of the equipment. And twenty-two, again, and most of these are, are based on need. So this is pretty low on the priorities unless you're a baseball player and you understand that you're dancing in mud every time it rains on that field. But it's trying to rebuild that field at some point, get it raised up and get some drainage in there. But it's, it's in a low spot and there's just not much more we can do to it. I mean, it's, it is what it is, so. We have a beautiful school, we do our best to maintain it, it's just, it's always a struggle, so. Any questions about any of these items?
I would suspect you're also dealing with increasing costs from like, say, a year ago to present. I see a significant increase from.
Well, it, it's a significant increase, even just down to getting paint to stripe the fields for some of our sports activities. Last year, we were having to resort to blending, working with paint suppliers because the polymers are in short supply. This year, twice, we've run into issues with even being able to get trash bags for, you know, getting this garbage out of the school. It's, this is an ongoing thing and from what I'm hearing from a lot of our suppliers, it's a good chance it's only gonna get worse. So, right now, I'm trying to work on getting pricing, if we can buy some larger quantities. Can we get any price reduction just because it's gotten rough? But even on our paper and, you know, stuff that's got a shelf life that can help carry us into next year, especially if we, we have some budget issues coming in there. We're still gonna have trash to get out the door and, you know, hands to wash and dry with paper towels. And those things are, are just climbing in price still, so.
It's, Wendell or Wendy, will any of these fall under the SFR funds?
Yes, we have a portion of that in there. It's approximately ninety-eight thousand-ish that we have.
Okay.
To help with that kind of thing. Per year, ninety-eight thousand per year.
Okay.
And again, you know, none of this stuff covers our normal day-to-day. The, the soaps and the disinfectants to keep the school clean. You know, even just, just had to buy or replace another mop handle. And it's like, it's gone up, not quite doubled in price, but it's like, it's just a real sum of items and what they, they increased on. So, we're trying to, you know, save where we can, but it's just, it's getting rough. You know, and again, we're getting ready to head into summer again. So, you know, the, the waxing in the floors, that was a, a huge issue even though I had ordered the stuff, they didn't deliver it. And so, we were actually having to have salespeople actually drive out as another five gallon, you know, hell became available to keep everybody moving, keep us getting the classrooms reset up for this school year. It's, it's just been a, it's an interesting time and it's, you know, it's, it's been a challenge.
Is it hard to get roofers in here?
It's hard to get anybody in here.
Okay, that applies just across the board, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and again, the roofers, and this, this is the, the struggle and this is why I'm working real hard to, to see, you know, trying to get, the other reason for trying to get the, like, the paper goods and the, the trash bags and stuff ordered up ahead of time is to make sure we're set and can we basically pull enough funds from somewhere else to squeeze a roof in at the end of the school year so that, again, we don't lose an entire building or start damaging floors and everything else because of that.
Okay. Thanks, I think.
I wish I had better news.
Yeah, it's depressing.
It's, it's been rough.
Thank you anyway. Approval of revisions to the following policies. Jeffrey or Bonnie, any comments on any of these?
Just, just a couple comments.
Hopefully everybody's had a chance to review them.
Yeah, there, there's obviously a multitude of policies regarding nondiscrimination and anti-harassment. According to Niola, who fine-tuned it and, and gave us the recommendations on what we should change, they used the input from the Office of Civil Rights based on recent rulings and findings. So, the definitions are included now, which I think are good, and also the identification of the compliance officers. So, we went through every policy and, and fine-tuned it. And it sounds like there's more on the docket in the future we have to go through. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, anytime. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions or comments? With that then, I entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented.
Can I, before we do that?
Yep.
Can I just insert, Klink, can you just double check on that definition thing that was brought up? The days?
I did, I actually have been emailing our rep tonight and he said, I'll just send him some of the discrepancies. He said it's, it is stated in there that some have been changed and some were not. But if one is changed in a, so it's not gonna, they're not gonna wipe out business across the board. He said though, if between like fourteen twenty-two and thirty-one twenty-two, if in the same paragraph they missed crossing business out, I can do that even after you guys approve them tonight.
Okay, good.
But he did, he's not wiping, they're not wiping out business completely.
And they have days defined.
Right.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're following up on that.
Yep.
Good statement, so.
So those changes will be made as technical changes after tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think it would be a good idea.
Okay.
And then, and then also probably give them approval to, you know, repair a roof if there's funds available for this school year.
Okay, all right, well, let's, let's address the policies first then. Again, I'd ask for a motion to approve the policies as presented.
I summon Fulu.
Second?
Long second.
Okay, I have a, a motion to approve and a second to approve the policies as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One other thing I guess we need to do with the project list that Arlen went through. We need to approve that pending any funding that we might get. So I'd entertain a motion to approve that capital project list and then also if funds are available for any roof repair that needs to be done.
Long summon.
Rudai's second.
Okay, I have a motion to second to approve the capital project list as presented and the roof repair if funds are available.
Can I ask a clarifying question before we vote? That list was set up in terms of priority, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you had mentioned that you would work with Andy or other groups to try to accomplish some of this?
Yes.
One of the things that, I mean, obviously the Booster Club could be a source for the baseball field, right? You know, so I would, I would go, you know, I would offer my support. Um, you know, so I would, I would go, you know, I would offer my support as long as you're continuing to look for those other connections to help offset some of those things, if and when that's possible.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion to second to approve, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any, uh, board referrals? I have nothing, is anyone else?
I do not.
Okay, then I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session to consider the, uh, new superintendent's contract and, and employee's request. So, uh, entertain that motion.
Rudai, solo.
Second.
Kersh, second.
Okay, I have a motion to second, uh, roll call. Kaling?
Yep. Rudai?
Yes.
Kersh?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Falu?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.